All right, we're going to call the work session of the council and the joint meeting with the park board. Call it to order here. And roll call please, Ms. Mangan. Where is she? There she is. Just to the council. And then we're going to go around and do introductions. All right, here comes Member Bennett. And Member Sprague. Just say "here," Joanie. Say "here."
Here.
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 The council was gathered tonight with the park board for the purpose of this work session on the Edinburgh Park study. And we have a presentation that's going to be made tonight. I just, one cautionary note, I think we should give the consultants about a half hour. Is that right, Manager Neil? We need to be finished by 6:30 so they can get the re, the room reoriented and set up for our council meeting. And then that will give the council also a chance to grab a quick bite to eat upstairs. And there are dinners upstairs for the, for the council members in the break room. All right, Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the City Council, members of the park board. We're here tonight to receive the, formally receive the presentation from ATSNR and Ballard and King on the operations and maintenance, operations and management study that they have conducted of the Edinburgh Park facility. This was a facility that council had some interested, in interest in learning more about. In 2010, we commissioned this study through an RFP process. Park Member Deeds, I believe, was on, was part of the process, part of the team that reviewed the RFPs, as were a member of, a number of staff members as well. We do have a presentation for you tonight that will be initially kicked off by Jeff King from Ballard and King. And I want to turn this podium over to Mr. King right now.
All right. Jeff, come on up. Introduce yourself. And before you start in, I want to just go around the dais here and have folks introduce themselves, so.
James Neville.
Thanks, James.
Patty White.
Ann Peters.
David Dees.
Yes, Jill.
Mary Brimble.
Tony Bell.
Jim Hublin.
Ann Spencer.
Josh Sprague.
Joseph Holbert.
Ellen Jones.
Bill Law.
Randy Meyer.
All right, thank you, folks. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thanks, Mayor. Ballard King Associates is part of the ATSNR team. We are facility planning and operating consulting firm, and we complete well over 500 of these types of studies across the country. And our specific role with this project is we completed the market analysis, program assessment, and operational feasibility, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. Also with, with the team tonight is Bill and Tammy. They're sitting in the audience, you'll hear from them shortly. They're from ATSNR, and they provided the facility assessment, the concept plan, and cost estimates. So it was really a team effort, and certainly staff was a critical part of, of that team process as well. We're going to be providing a summary of our preliminary findings for you this evening. And I apologize for some of the grammar and format errors in our zest to get you the preliminary report before the holidays. But we'll be making any changes necessary based on what we hear as an outcome from this evening's meeting, and certainly incorporate that into our final report. And as the mayor said, we are going to keep the presentation to 30 minutes or less, so without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and get started. Wanted to talk just briefly over some of the key points. The first item is our service area, what we refer to as a service area. And this is really, this was driven by where your current customers are coming from for Edinburgh Park. We found that as we did some analysis, 80% of those customers are from within this 20-mile radius. So it is rather large service area, and that's driven primarily because of the unique features you have, in particular Adventure Peak. Just to give you some contrast, if this were a typical community center that we'd be involved with, your service area would probably be more like a five, maybe a seven-mile radius. But certainly the unique features that you have, have a tendency to expand the size of the service area. So once we established a service area, we took a look in to examine the demographic characteristics within that service area. And what we found is, in the five to 12 age category, your population in that service area is slightly higher percentage-wise than what we'd see on a national level. And to put this in some perspective, there are over 410,000 children under age 12 in the service area. And that certainly is the, one of the main focuses for, for attracting, for attractions to the park. We also took a look at median age, and what we found is the median household income in the service area, $70,454. And that compares to a national level of $54,442. So the, the median household income is higher. Put it another perspective, 67.4% of the households in the service area have income, household income over $50,000 a year, and that compares to a national level of 54%. So what all this points to is certainly the age and income are two of the determining factors that drive participation in these types of facilities. So certainly, as we look at the service area, it's very favorable for the components that you have. We also looked at spending potential index, that's what SPI stands for, and some of the market conditions. Some of the tables you see here, again, in the red color, that's the immediate service area. And when we say immediate service area, that's referring to the city of Edina proper. The blue is, is that primary service area. Green is the state of Minnesota. Yellow is the, a national level. So you can see the SPIs are significantly higher. You know, note, you know, fees for activity being 189. If this were to, how this works is 100 would be the average, as far as a benchmark for the US. So anything higher than 100 obviously shows a stronger potential for that. So it's certainly a very strong numbers. We also took a look at participation rates. And the participation rates we focused on were more for the existing activities for the city of Edina, and these were customized for the city of Edina. So part of the body of the report will include some information, starts to look at what the specific participation rates are for these various activities. We also examined the alternative service providers. And this was on two levels. One was looking at it from an indoor play structure perspective. And certainly there's, there's other communities that have similar facilities, not to the magnitude of what you have here in Edina, but certainly comparable in terms of their, their draw and their interest. But Shoreview, New Brighton, Woodbury, Maple Grove, and the new facilities being included as part of the Southdale renovation were also as, as part of this market analysis that we did and took a look at some of these alternative service providers. Beyond the, the indoor play component, we also looked at, from a fitness perspective, some of the other providers. And you have everything in this area from LA Fitness, and Bally's, and YMCA's, you know, national level clubs, to WelsaCon, Steel Fitness, Cal Home Beach, to Snap Fitness, and Planet Hollywood, and Curves, and all those types of things. There's a, there's a plethora of those opportunities available. And I think you can point to one reason for that, and that's, well, actually two reasons. One is the population density in this area, and two is the household income. And so certainly there's a significant number of alternative service providers, excuse me, for, for fitness in your area. The popularity of, of fitness has remained pretty strong, and that's certainly evident by the number of alternative providers you have. So next up, we took a look at some of the existing conditions. We took a look at the, certainly the fitness component. And our analysis suggested that about less than 4% of the admissions that you receive at Edinburgh actually represent the fitness industry, or the fitness components. And so you'd ask yourself, why is that? Well, it's because you have limited space, there's really not a lot of equipment, you know, you're limited with the equipment, there's no group exercise room, locker rooms are not large enough to accommodate this type of use, and, and there's no child watch. A lot of the clubs and the fitness centers you see around the Twin Cities, they, they have child watch, so that mom with a preschooler, or dad with a preschooler can drop them off and have them supervised while they complete a workout. But as I mentioned, the popularity of fitness is still strong. Aerobics, exercise with equipment, weightlifting, running, jogging, exercise walking, are all activities that are in the top 12 in terms of popularity in, in the United States. But for you to pursue the fitness and try to get into that market would require a pretty significant outlay. You would need somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 square feet of space within the center to be able to compete in that particular component. And even if we, even if you did move in that direction, there's no assurance that that would be successful, in part because, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but I think there's a stigma that has been developed around the facility. And that is that Edinburgh Park is a facility for, for youngsters and children, for play. It may be really hard in, in the marketplace to start thinking about that as a premier fitness center, knowing that it's been operating as, as kind of a kids' factory for quite some time. You also have the issue of mixed audiences. Sometimes when you're mixing kids with adults, that doesn't work real well. And as I mentioned earlier, you've got a very strong alternative service providers in the area, some significant competition. But certainly if you're looking at, at the fitness component, you would have to make some of these refinements in your facility to even go after any of that, to improve the, the use of those spaces. We took a look at the, at the pool. Essentially, you have a lap pool. You've got an image here of the, of the mechanical room, and you can see how, how that's laid out. And, and the image on the right is a shot from the track, and you can kind of see the pool in that. It's rather one-dimensional. You know, the lax, some of the water depth for competition swimming, lax of support spaces, again, in terms of locker room and seating. Essentially, you, you have a, a lap pool. And it's interesting, of the swimming component, roughly 19% of your population participates in, in swimming. But our analysis would indicated that only about 4% of that is actually people that are interested in the conventional pool layout, which is obviously what you have. And certainly, what, what we're seeing in terms of market appeal is, is combining and changing the format to where this is an image of a leisure pool, it has lap lanes included in the design, a lazy river, it has a water slide, it has interactive play equipment, zero-depth entry, those, those types of components. And obviously, if you were interested in pursuing the aquatic venue, it would take that kind of an effort to really generate the type of participation revenue, and there'd be some questions if that would even fit on, on the existing, on the existing site. One last point I want to make about aquatics before I move on is currently you're spending in your budget approximately $30,000 a year. And the key to that number is that does not include any lifeguards. I think the, as I indicated here, the facility is underperforming, and it's underutilized. The fact that you have no, no lifeguards is an indication of the utilization of that We took, certainly took a look at Adventure Peak, and without question, that's kind of the identifying moniker, if you will, for, for the park and for the city of Edina. And it certainly has been the reason you've been able to expand the service area to a 20-mile radius. Without question, it's been your driver for generating revenue. It's heavily utilized. It's absolutely amazing, you have done over 1,300 birthday parties last year. That's amazing. And you, you just don't see that kind, kind of response. And as I mentioned, it does expand the service area. As wonderful as the results are, I would certainly caution you about, in a sense, resting on your laurels, because others are looking at the success you have here in Edina. And for example, the city of Shoreview has plans to double the size of their indoor play area. Southdale Mall's putting in soft play, the challenge course at Mall of America, you know, there, there are others that are taking a look at this success and trying to emulate what you're doing here in Edina. And I guess that's the best sign, signal of flattery, right, is, is duplication. So without question, Adventure Peak is, is the reason why you enjoy the market position that you have. We also took a look at the theater area. And certainly as we looked at the theater, you've got some conflict of use going on. The noise from Adventure Peak typically will drown out a lot of activities that, that could take place in, in the theater. It's underutilized. It looked like, from our analysis, primarily Wednesday and Friday evenings, and Mondays during the day. So it's not being used a great deal over the course of the week. And perhaps one of the issues is the lacking support spaces. You know, seating and, and storage, and, and most importantly, the acoustics that, that you have. And here's a couple other images of what I talk about when I say support spaces. The image on the right-hand side is a storage area that's been converted to office space. And the storage area that you see on the left, it's actually been tiered, so they put two levels in, so they can put more stuff in the room. And that's where a lot of the concession and aquatic elements are stored. And so before I pass this off to Tammy talking about, Tammy and Bill talking about the program options, I wanted to just highlight that, really, when we start to look at the demographic assessment, you know, looking at the alternative service providers, the analysis of the existing use patterns, the existing conditions, with the goal of trying to improve the cost recovery rate, and rolling in some of the goals that we were given as part of this study, you know, trying to create a positive experience, continued improvements, improving the quality of the core elements that you offer, increase the park use, and, and really build on creating that family fitness opportunity, led, led us to developing a number of program options that Tammy and Bill are going to talk about. I guess Tammy's going to talk about it.
Good. Bear with me a second, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
I'll be back.
All right. Yeah. Thanks. Tammy, welcome.
Thanks. I'm Tammy Magny with ATSNR Architects, and Bill Martin. And it's been really fun to watch this study unfold and to see the, the directions it took, because nobody really knew, as we started out, if it was going to try to be a big fitness facility or, or what. But the, the leanings were really towards this, this youth facility that was an engaging place. It was an active place where parents and grandparents interact with their kids actively, not just watch. They're not just spectators in the event. That was a really important goal. So as you see some of these diagrams that we show you, understand that that was a really important piece of it. So what the recommendation is, you've all probably seen the CIP report that Ann and her counterparts did. So we really recommend that you complete that. The building's in pretty good shape. There's some things that need to be done to keep it feeling like the kind of first-class facility that it is. We recommend that you look strongly at the energy improvements that are suggested in the report, and that have been suggested in the CIP, because you do, just do save a lot of money with, with some good improvements. But the main part of our report is the, to talk about the phased plan. And you could do it all in one, you could do it in many phases, but this is sort of also prioritized in, in the phase plan. So what I'll walk you through is the infilling of the pool in phase one. And also, as we do that, it's really important that they're, they're really lacking family restroom facilities, unisex restroom facilities. And if we're looking at increasing the younger children, that, we need more of the unisex restrooms for that to happen. So you'll see that in phase one. Phase two is modifying the triack to become offices and meeting rooms. I don't know if many of you have been down in Ann's office, or the, the director's office. They've really equipped them nicely, but there's no daylight. They're really are great for storage rooms. They're, they're working wonderful for office meetings. But I think as you develop a, more of a front with the public, and you have more people coming in to have spaces that meet their needs will be good. And we'll show you that in phase two. Phase three is a, a challenge course idea. I don't know if you've seen the one at the Mall of America, but we'll give you an idea of that. And then infilling the grotto, which is that low area where the waterfall comes through. It's not handicap accessible. But still, to keep the feel of it, we really felt, as we went through it, and from looking at the surveys that they had taken, that the feel of the place is important. So in no way were we trying to, in any of these schemes, take away from the, kind of the, the park-like nature of it, and make it into some techno hall or something. So the park-like nature was really important. The energy efficient items I mentioned in, in, in the early stages would be important things to do to follow through with your CIE plan, CIP plan. We, we talked a lot about the plantings, and we looked at taking them all out, we looked at putting silks in, we looked at taking part of them out. And what this scheme suggests is keeping them in the central core, because you see them from wherever you are, that when you enter the park, you see some of them. But we, we, we did look at recommending taking out some of those grow lights, like a third to, two-thirds of them almost, and really focusing them. And maybe some replacements aren't sold plants. But it's, and so most of your savings that you see in the chart is from labor, is, is mostly man labor, manpower, and also some lighting. So walking into the, the first concept, the whole idea of taking the pool out, you'll see there's a $22,900 or $500,000 savings by doing that. Most of that is in heating the water, and the airspace, and, and some staffing. But it's, it's a large space, and it's an exciting space. It's two stories, and there's the natural light that comes in from around the track area. And you can also view in, into it from that track area. So it's, it's an exciting space. And the idea is to create separate party rooms that people could rent out. One of the things that they find at the park is there's a lot of expanded families that come for these birthday parties. Grammas, grandpas, uncles, all sorts of things. And they don't all fit in that open patio area they have. So they felt that that would be a great way to bring more people into the park with these different sized party rooms that could open up to, together. And also, a lot of times with the little kids and the older kids mixing on that platform area, it gets kind of challenging. So this would really allow some differentiation of space for that. So we feel that the space is large enough to have, I think Adventure Peak is the largest play area like that. And we think this soft play could also be the largest play area. You can kind of see graphically, it's, it's even a little bigger in square footage than Adventure Peak. But you also see the, the colorful play areas. It would be climbing, moving around, again, space for adults, and to interact with kids, and some tree-like spaces that would make it fun. So it would be really recreating that, but it would still be two, two stories, you could still look down into it from the upper level. The B and C are mostly just looking at how to create these areas that will really support families. And coats are also a challenge. They're laying all over, and boots, of course, in our climate. So we've kind of created a couple of locker nooks, a coat area where the existing locker rooms are, larger men's and women's restrooms, and then a large family restroom. So that's what B was, the lower level. And C was the upper level, instead of the two men's and women's restroom, to create two unisex restrooms, and more, more importantly, or just as important, is a large storage area. They've really improved, if you've been there recently, the concessions, and they're also looking at quite an increased revenue from that. But to support that concessions, you need storage nearby. I think they're making ice down underneath by the amphitheater, and you saw where Jeff showed you the two-layer storage. So they're going all over to store things. And as that becomes an important revenue source, having things really close by is important. And also with the health officials, it'll only improve opportunities for what they can serve in that area. So that was, that was A, B, and C. The track modifications, the tracks had a slope, which you'd know if, if you had been on it. We feel we could level it out even, and get a couple of offices on the east side, a meeting room, I can kind of, a meeting room on the west side that could be used for meetings, or for small classes, or, again, another birthday party venue if needed. And then on the far side, looking at a couple just more of internal meeting rooms and a large storage area in between. Still keeping the glass, looking down, and then creating kind of a picnic deck. Because while we're really catering to parties, there's also people that just come to use the park. So a kind of a place for them to go and regroup. Bill, did you want to talk about any of the costs? I kind of, I'm by there.
The top bar is the current CIP improvements, which you already have in your list from the, from the, from the committee. And we did add to it, under the column for energy improvement and modifications, for occupancy sensors, revising the great hall lights, then the costs associated with revising the lighting for reducing the plants. Some of these have paybacks, some don't. Some of them are improvements on, yes, there will be energy improvements when you replace the doors, the exterior doors, but we didn't, but there isn't, it's a maintenance improvement, not an energy payback project. The second set is recommended improvements if the program enhancements are not made. So these are the ones that really relate to the existing building, not related to program changes. So there are the, the park recommendations already, the CIP, the energy improvements related to recommissioning the HBAC for the pool, and revising the pool pumps to make them, give them VFDs to operate more efficiently. Those have paybacks, there's a utility rebate associated with those. And there's a energy, yearly energy savings column as well, related to that. The program enhancements, we did a cost analysis for each of these, A, B, C, D, and E. Those are in the appendix of the book that was passed out to you before. So these costs are, are project costs, not construction costs. And these are estimates, they're not hard-bid numbers. So we do have a column for the building construction, the revisions to accommodate the programs, and we do have a line item for the associated furniture. So when you look at the party concept plan, infilling the pool to bring it all up to one level, adding the walls, or movable walls for the party rooms, adding a service corridor at each end for catering, or those types of functions, to get access to the rooms from, rather than through the, from the front, from the rear, and then conversions of the end storage room to a party and, and office, as an example. That's $132,000, $1,342, and a $208,800. And the party room's furniture related to that is the $24,000. Similar costs are in the appendix of what was passed out to you before for B, C, D, and E, and F, obviously.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to make sure you knew where those numbers came from. Okay, so the next phase that they looked at is the idea of a challenge course. And this would be set up over that soft play area with different beams and access points, as you kind of see in the pictures associated, where they'd be in a harness that would draw them across, but they'd be climbing, it'd be really a challenge, really pushing them, it'd be a great place for teamwork, for, I think it'd be a real draw. It, it is a real draw at the Mall of America, and it's a perfect kind of venue to do, to do it into. And using that existing track, particularly on the south side, is where, where we would access it. And then the, the plan would be in phase one to do it above that soft play area, in the pool area. In phase two, you can kind of see in the section here, where you could move out above the great hall area, and then out above the grotto area, to really take it to the extreme. There are not prices included in, for all, for all of that, in our phasing plan, but Bill has some prices in. And one of the last things, and it doesn't mean it's least, but, but the idea of losing the grotto is kind of harder to swallow sometimes, I think. But the idea of filling in that lower area and creating three really interactive technology spots for large screen, Wii, a light, an active light floor, Dance Dance Revolution, again, things that adults can do with young people and, and stay active in it. And then what we were thinking in the, in the amphitheater floor area, to keep that an active area, because we, there's been a lot invested in creating that as, as a musical performance, it's just that it's not used as much. But if we could use it for something else when that's not being used, with projectors in the ceiling, and creating an active, interactive play area with that light floor, could be, especially for the younger kids, a really fun, interactive space. So Jeff, did you want to? I guess before we went on, did anyone have any questions about those, the areas?
Questions, folks?
I, I just wanted to look at the projections for the grotto area for a second, because it's the only one that's in the red. So it might understand that that's kind of a loss leader from the beginning of its inception.
I'm going to verify this with Jeff. All the numbers that Jeff gave me were cumulative, Jeff. And so when I tried to break them up separate, up here, with our cumulative down here, that is a negative?
You know, that certainly wouldn't be, I'm sorry.
That certainly wouldn't be the case. All of these options, any or all of the options, I'm going to talk about operations here in a moment, but any and all of these off- a moment, but any and all of these options would have a positive impact on your operating budget as it stands today. And what I did in terms of phasing this, it went, coincided with, you know, one being soft play, second level being the challenge course, and the third level being the grotto interactive play area. So, as I did my analysis, I added on to each one of those. So, you'll see this in a minute.
Number Bennett.
Was there anything that you looked at in terms of use other than current uses and this potential use of expanded kids' play and birthday party use?
We did add to that significantly with the projections. I think for birthday parties, given the number you're currently at, even in improving that less than 1%, it's still over 400 birthday parties extra. So, we tried to be very conservative with those projections.
Sure. Backing up, did you look at any other uses? Because I recall council having discussion with the park board last January and discussion during council comments about looking at everything. And we wanted, there had been a number of rentals for social events in the past. It certainly is a unique facility. And so, some of us at least wanted there to be an examination of what that did for bottom line, what it would do going forward, understanding that there are conflict of uses. But I recall comments about everything being on the table, even sale of the building. But when I read this document, all I see is, again, this analysis of current uses plus analysis of future uses, those uses, future uses being confined to either expand the kid option, expand birthday party option. And I guess I have a question for Manager Neil because I've posed this in writing earlier this today. Is there a record that the council ever saw, the RFP, for this?
It's Council member Bennett and the council. I don't believe that, I don't believe my mic is on, but I'll tell you that we don't have a record of the RFP getting the same kind of review and approval at the council level that it did, that the, for instance, the Art Center RFP did, where we brought it to you for your formal input and then continuing to kind of incorporate that input back into the agreement. Council member, or excuse me, Director Caprios and I did take what we believed were comments that we'd received from park board and also, I think, kind of the tenor of the discussion from the council and did shape the RFP based on that, but did not bring it to the council for a review and approval. That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I searched pretty carefully for some indication that I had ever seen in RFP and I could find no indication of that. And then, looking at page 50 of this study and recommendations, it appears that for a three-month period in 2010 or 2011, only 6.5% of the birthday parties scheduled in that three-month period were scheduled by Edina residents. Is that one of the errors that you talked about earlier or is that correct?
No, that's correct. Because that was the point about having a 20-mile radius on the service area is you're developing a tremendous marketplace for birthday parties and people are coming from all over the Twin Cities. It's probably more reflection with the large number being 1,300 that the actual residents that are using it, it represents a small, only because there's such demand for that type of service in this whole area.
Sure. But best-case scenario, using the numbers you've given and assuming that they don't conflict with other uses and you don't overcongest the park because I know congestion is an issue now. So, best-case scenario, you're still at about a 90% recovery. Is that correct?
Well, certainly when we add these new elements to it, I think that puts you up to a point where it's self-sustaining.
You've mentioned 90%. In any event, what looks like we're looking at, well, again, best-case scenario, but what it looks like to me is a taxpayer-subsidized birthday party facility. And I know from the budget workshops that we held this fall that there was particular attention given by our residents who attended to the percentage of users who come from our actual community, not the 20-mile area, understanding that that's significant. But what our taxpayers are interested in putting public money toward is something that chiefly serves the residents of this city. And when they see a significant amount of use coming from outside the city, even within a 20-square-mile area, they are concerned that an entity be totally self-sufficient. So, I'm, I feel, I'm disappointed. I was looking for an analysis that's broader than the one that's in front of us, that had more ideas in it. And I guess it's frustrating to me that we're a year from where we started with this discussion. And again, we have, I understand an in-depth analysis, but it's pretty limited, pretty limited in what it might say.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. What you see before you was kind of the task that we are given and discussed as part of the process. And I apologize, it may not have gone in the depth that you were looking for. I might add one other element to this. What we tried to provide for you is not saying, yes, City of Edina, you should do this or you should do that. What we tried to do is provide you tools to help with the decision-making process. And we think we've provided some tools that if one of the goals was to increase the recovery rate, in a sense, decrease the amount of general fund tax support for that operation, you have that before you. You have a plan for that. And that's what we focus on, trying to provide you the tools for helping it with the decision-making process.
I guess one last question, and that is, you do mention this necessity or desirability of Edinburgh, of Adventure Peak, doing substantial renovations, really transforming a building that has had multiple uses and concentrating it more on a particular demographic. You describe it as a family facility, but a family without young children really wouldn't be drawn to the facility, nor would a senior without a young child in tow really be drawn to the facility. So, given that, I don't find in this analysis any recognition that competitors in the area are going to, are they going to really not do the renovations that you anticipate they're going to do because there is word on the street that Adventure Peak is going to renovate and expand their birthday party private rooms? Or are they going to go ahead and do their improvements anyway? And does that then affect your projections?
Couple things. No, it doesn't affect the projections because we are so very conservative with that. Again, with the birthday parties, looking at that element in itself, because that's certainly a key. Expanding with the facilities that we're talking about here, expanding the birthday parties by 0.1% in the service area will generate over 400 birthday parties a year. Our belief is that even though Shoreview's looking at expansion, these others are looking at expanding the facilities and getting into the market. They're doing that because it's lucrative, it's drawing people in, and it's generating revenue. And I don't think, the one other point we shouldn't overlook is, you know, certainly this facility being a contributor to the economic health of your community because these visitors that are coming in are not always just coming into Edina and leaving. In many cases, they're purchasing gasoline, they're eating in your restaurants, they're shopping in the area. So, there is an economic fallout from that as well.
Member Swenson.
So, if we currently give a considerable amount of money every year to this facility, are you suggesting that if we made the improvements you have listed here, that their additional revenue is going to cover what we're currently putting into the building?
What I'm saying, and thank you for that segue into the slides so we can finish up, this is our last slide. But essentially, what we're saying is, from that option, that first option, the soft play, that would have a positive cash flow of 143, almost $144,000 that would go towards your operations. So, this is not, these are not components that would end up costing you more money to operate. These are components that are generating more income. And so, across the board, all three of these options are going to generate more revenue for the operations and less reliance on general fund support.
Okay. And then, my follow-up question to that, then, on this spreadsheet, do we have the cost of financing these improvements included then?
Oh, debt service.
Because I don't see any line for debt service.
Correct. That was one of the questions that was raised, is how do we deal with debt service, if that should be included or not? And you're exactly right with that. Debt service is not part of these calculations at this point.
Okay. And then, when you started into this, one of our questions always been is, what is our contractual obligation for the pool and the track with the either office building or senior center that we're attached to? And I did see that you noted that that might be a problem, but I didn't ever see that answer.
Yeah, that was something that we talked with staff on, and I know there's some pending information coming in regards to what that impact would actually be. There's some discussion in terms of if there would be, in a sense, a payment having to be made or just how that would play out. So, those questions were not clear as we were putting this information together.
So, the answer to that question wasn't clear? Okay.
Correct.
Other questions? Back to Member Swenson.
And so, there could be additional, there would be additional revenue loss from the associations in the amount of what per year approximately? Let's just assume for a moment that that was feasible.
I'm going to turn it, and in terms of revenues from some of those other sources.
Just from the condo association fees?
It could potentially, it could potentially be $200,000. And it was our intention to ask our city attorney to look into that further.
So, putting the legality aside for now, it would be $200,000 less revenue, which would also factor into this analysis somewhere along with the debt service.
All right. A couple things, I just went through this document and just rattled things into my own questions. Looking at the number of families, on page 21, you're describing the number of families in a demographic and between now and 2015.
Correct.
So, I went to the school district and I said, here are the numbers we've been given. What do you see and what's your projection? And while they see by 2014, what they see is this year we've got 7,022 kids in school, 2015, they see 7,322. Then there's a slight drop, 15, 16 to 7,255, and then it goes back up from there. So, my question on that was, does the decrease on page 21 indicate a trend in lower numbers? And I don't think it does, not by the numbers I see that the school is projecting.
No, and you also need to keep in mind, what you don't see on page 21 is that age group distribution of how that breakdown is, which certainly contributes to that.
Okay. Looking at sports team participation, I knew that my colleagues on the council were going to pick apart the dollars, so I looked more at the stuff that I count. Looking at the activities on page 45 with minus signs in front of them, which are all, other than skateboarding, they're all team sports. And I was surprised to see that. I'm just wondering, where are you, I don't think we're experiencing that in our city. And maybe members of the park board can correct me on that, but I was surprised to see this.
Correct. And keep in mind that in an even status, this is a national.
I know that's stated there, but it just surprised me.
But what we are seeing across the country, in some cases, is a movement from team sports to individual activities. We have seen that very clear in many, many communities around the country. And the interesting thing, as I look at this table, it certainly speaks to, you know, again, the fitness component, exercise with equipment, aerobics, running, jogging, weightlifting, how those numbers continue to grow to a point where this is not a passing fad. You know, these numbers have been there sustained long enough that this has become a way of life, which is certainly a good thing. But those numbers continue to be extremely strong. And it's not uncommon to see fluctuation in some of these activities as you look over time. Tennis is a great example. There were years in the past where tennis was kind of near the bottom. It's now having a little bit of a resurgence. And that's not uncommon in the parks and recreation industry to see a program lifecycle. And you see some ebbs and flows with that over time.
Okay.
I mean, right now, I mean, pickleball, believe it or not, is something that's gained all kinds of popularity. And three years ago, nobody was doing that. So, it's, who knows what that activity is going to be next year or year after. But there's constantly those ebbs and flows and product life cycle that occurs within the parks and recreation industry.
Okay. Looking at iClick, how does that affect the floor that's currently in the amphitheater? Is that a mat that goes down or is that something that gets built into the floor?
There's a variety of ways to accomplish it, but I think we would look at a rolled mat. It's kind of similar to a lot of ballet studios will have a rolled surface that goes down that they can unroll for a multi-use space. But that's what we were thinking, it would be something that would roll up so you could maintain the same.
So, it would be compatible with the amphitheater?
Yeah.
All right.
It wasn't meant at all to get rid of the amphitheater.
All right. That is, for me, probably the most important aspect of it since I'm a performer and I play there once a month. So, it's, it is important that we maintain, I mean, that's about the only thing, other than parents bringing kids in and grandparents bringing kids in. That's the only thing that brings adults in, is the amphitheater. So, I would like, I, you know, when I page through this, I'm going, oh, my God, am I not going to be there anymore? And so, I'm looking at this and not wanting to, not wanting to lose that aspect of it. The challenge course, so this is something that they're up on top.
Right.
So, we're on, you know, we're on this level and we're doing our thing and they're up here.
Yep.
Okay. Now.
I don't even know that you'd know, if there weren't kids up there, that you'd know the apparatus was up there. It wouldn't be real obvious to you. Like, if you were there for a concert or something, you wouldn't look up and think, what in the world's going on up there?
Hmm, really? Because, I mean, I know the lights are there and we've got the light structure there for the stage. So, I guess I wouldn't put it over the amphitheater, that would be my own preference. Because that's, you know, that's a space that even its height is still part of the acoustics of the amphitheater and I would caution from that.
Well, that TV comes up pretty high, too. So, that space is more three-dimensional in that area.
Right. All right. Well, originally, the park was a young adult park. And so, consequently, you had the things that would draw young adults to the park. And one of those was a soft play area for young children and the skating and the grotto and the amphitheater. And over time, it has evolved, as things will, after, it opened in 1987. So, over time, it has changed. And so, I guess my thing is to look at the changes and make sure that as they change, for instance, the storage rooms that you talk about downstairs are actually old green rooms. And the loss of them is kind of a big deal when you have a performing group. Because there's really no place but in the hall for coats and boots and cases. So, from a performer's standpoint, it's actually not a comfortable place to be. We love the stage, but other than that, it is a challenging place to be. So, I would look for some relief there.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because we talked about that in a lot of detail and that was another reason to move the offices up, to free up, just so you can use that space more. I think you called it support spaces or something.
And just one last thing that I know Ann and I talked a bit ago about whether to hold on to the grand piano. And of course, my opinion was, oh, my God, you can't lose the grand piano. But I don't think it's been touched since we had that discussion. So, it's not in great shape. It's got some nicks and scratches on it, but my thought on that is either sell it or move it to the senior center because actually, I think they might really enjoy it over there. So, that would be an option that could be thought about. But anyway, it's always intriguing to look at creative ideas. I appreciate the time and effort in this and also the perspectives from our neighboring cities and what they're doing. I have been to the Woodbury facility. You almost. You almost think you're in Edinburgh when you're in that building, except that it's a scale model of Edinburgh, it's quite small in comparison. And the play area that would be similar to Adventure Peak is actually part of the YMCA there, so it directly adjoins.
Yeah, and it's a pretty sterile environment, as far as the play equipment goes.
Yeah. The only last comment I would have is that the value of the park to the residents at Edina Park Plaza changes, I think. It changes when this becomes more a teen and younger park. And so looking at this as an attractant for why a senior would choose to live at Edina Park Plaza, could go both ways, I suppose. Right now, I believe, and Anne can correct me if I'm wrong, the requests of the resident community there really hold the amphitheater to noises and sound only at certain times. So putting a techno world in there, in the grotto, I don't know, I mean, it's going to be anybody's guess to see what that's going to do to sound and what the reaction is going to be. Because if I live there as an Edina resident, part of my rent is paid to the park. And if I live there as a non-Edina resident, more of my rent goes to the park. So there is a surcharge to them of a certain amount, and therefore, I think the park has, needs to have some value to them. So those are my comments.
And I would think that one other change that's occurred over time, and I appreciate the historic perspective that you have and how things develop, but certainly, the economic conditions have changed as well. If I remember correctly, when the park first opened, there were no fees that were being charged to use it.
True.
Now, certainly, we understand, given the economy and what's going on, the need for generating revenue, user pay philosophy, if you will, and that certainly has been part of what's transpired as well.
Sure. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Joseph Holber, please.
Hi. If anybody's been to Edinburgh Park, they'll know that Adventure Peak is by far the densest area of people in Edinburgh Park. If we're looking at changing more of the areas of Edinburgh Park to be facilities that bring more children and older, you know, young teens in there, I'm wondering is if the building design, is it capable of accommodating that type of traffic, parking, et cetera? The last few times I have been there, the parking has been pretty full, and I don't know if this is a good question for you, but.
The park's a good one, because it's semi-mutched.
Okay. Because I'm looking at that, and it looks like, I mean, you're pushing to, actually, looking at going there for an event later this year, and there are some kids who are 10, 11, 12, 13, that are interested in Adventure Peak. So some of the other things that you're talking about are kind of neat, but I'm just wondering from a facility standpoint, if we can accommodate that increased density in there. I don't know if that's a question for you.
What the design folks, they have a comment on that?
Well, we were talking, Anne, that we would have to do some discussions with the office park to open up the other level of parking for weekends and evenings and time when those heavier flows, those discussions would need to happen, because there's not a lot of room to increase parking. So that would have to be part of the discussion.
You mean a shared parking agreement? Is that what would be necessary?
The parking ramp is the lower.
The level of the parking ramp is not used on the weekend by the corporate center. It sits empty 98% of it, and the 2% is used by our staff. So I would propose, in that case, that we contact the corporate center and ask them if we would be able to have access to that space during the weekends, when it's not being used. During the week, parking's not a problem, it's the weekends. I would totally agree with you that it's overcrowded.
Has there been any estimate, though, if we make these changes, how many additional trips or vehicles are going to come there? So under the current scenario, it's okay, but under, you know, phase one, two, and three, what's that going to look like? Do we have any idea?
Well, from the operations perspective, we did a detailed analysis on a line item basis, not only on the expense side, but on the revenue side. So we've got numbers that we've assembled for making our projections, and certainly, whatever the ratio planning and zoning would use, or represented from the city of Edina could give us some guidance in terms of what that means in terms of parking stalls for coming in. But, you know, the essence of, and I think you touched on earlier, from a programming perspective, was try to expand and diversify that core business, and that's why we were looking at components that might be of interest to the tween population, and also the soft play for the younger. So you didn't have such a high concentration in Adventure Peak, it kind of spread people out.
A couple of things, one financial related, I want to ask you a question. David, I'd be interested in your comments, too, from being part of the study team, as you went along through this process, and your thoughts as to the viability of this. But let me make sure I understand this correctly, from your spreadsheet and from your feasibility summary, your notion, at least what you're telling us, is there's a possibility that if we spent about $3.7 million on these different phases cumulatively, that we would recover about $425,000 in positive revenue that could be offset against the $350,000 that we lose over there annually now. Is that a sort of a nutshell encapsulation of what you're recommending, or what you're suggesting?
No, it's not, Mayor. The way that this summary works is that, you know, if you were to do just the soft play, you see the numbers there. So if you go beyond that, and you look at the challenge course, obviously, the expenses to operate that go up, and so the difference, I guess they build on one another, you can't take a look at adding those together.
So we can't look at your feasibility summary, add those difference amounts?
So.
If all three phase ends occur, I guess that's one way to say it.
Correct.
In the term that will be in the black, to the extent that we can offset the existing losses over there?
Yeah, so what we're saying is, if you did all three options, we would anticipate an increase in expenditures for the facility of $212,000, additional revenues of almost $350,000, and that difference is $135,000.
All right. So you're reading those left to right, and those are cumulative impacts? Is that it? If we do the, okay, David, go ahead.
I did a quick fact, I did some quick fact of the napkin. We don't have debt load in here. Essentially, if you do the phase one, it's about a, where am I, about a 6.7% return on the investment. You put debt load in there, I assume we're borrowing somewhere around four, so we'll cover debt load, but it's only about a two, it's only about a two and a half, probably, percent return on the investment, in terms of annual, we can do it another way, but in terms of what is kicking off. I looked at it with, I walked the facility with Anne and walked through it, I mean, the only way to grow the revenues, I think they're right, I think they're dead on in terms of the, it's the, you know, under eight usage. That's what's driving it right now. The fact that Anne's been able to get as many birthday parties in there as she has is amazing. If you walk the facility and see how they shoehorn them in, you know, it's an impressive feat. Overall, this is not going to get it to break even. I mean, it's just not. It's closed gap somewhat, you know, it will close the gap somewhat, it'll make for better utilization. Overall, I think there's utility benefit to having this kind of facility in the community. And it's a good facility for younger families, which I would assume, keeping the community lively, we would like to encourage. From a pure financial point of view, the expansion makes sense on its own, but it doesn't solve the underlying problems that Edinburgh faces. That's what it looks like to me. And the numbers, I'm trusting the numbers here, I'm a little skeptical on the teen side of things, the interactive side of things, getting those between the ages of, you know, 10 and 14 in someplace like this, maybe. I'm a little skeptical of the ability to actually get them to do it, but I haven't done a market study on it. So overall, I think there is a real potential to grow revenues through the birthday party side of things. And probably, rather than optimizing with the teens, if we really optimized for, you know, under 10, would probably be where we'd maximize the financial returns on the building. And that's what we're looking to do. The question, the offset of the $200,000 for the apartments, is an interesting question, and until that answers, that's assuming we still keep most of that revenue, that revenue goes away, none of this makes sense.
I don't really see risk factored into this either. You know, if we're getting a 2% return, and we're taking a pretty big risk on this investment, that's what concerns me. It's a difficult nut to crack. How many facilities have you analyzed over the course of your career, do you think?
As I indicated earlier, we've, as a company, we have completed over 500 studies across the country, and of a lot of those needs assessment feasibility studies, we've completed approximately 125 facilities are up and operating. We're not architects, we're not engineers, we get involved in the front end.
Yep.
And so not every project that we work on ends up in something being built. And we pride ourselves, in part, because of the practical experience we have working in parks and recreation industry, and working in municipal government, we pride ourselves in being very conservative. Again, we try to provide the tools necessary to make good decisions, to your comment, David, I mean, when you look at the challenge course, we're basically saying that that's going to generate another $28,000 in revenue. Now, that's a pretty low number, very conservative, but on the expense side, I mean, we hit everything on all the staffing costs, the utility cost, we had contractual services, commodities, we even had capital replacement in there, and the plan included a way of trying to generate a capital replacement fund, short of trying to compete with everything else going on in the city, by having, in a sense, a surcharge on admission rates that are being charged to build a significant capital plan. So from an expense side, I think we are as realistic as we possibly could be, and we're very conservative on the revenue side.
My question was, since you've done this a lot, how many facilities like this have you come across that are this functionally obsolete? I mean, I understand the revenue generating capacity of these improvements, the functions will be successful, but we have to build them in a functionally obsolete facility, and that capital improvement cost takes quite a bit away from the bottom line. So have you run across another facility like this, and if so, where did they go with it? You know, the options are, you know, invest more, close it, or build it somewhere else?
We were talking before this evening's meeting, I'm doing a project as we speak in Florida, and although it's not the same components, it's a, basically, a community center, but they're struggling with the same issues. And one of it is, is, you know, what are their options? And one was to look at closing it, but there was still a cost associated with closing that, that they need to understand. But that's part of the challenge here, is you've got a facility that truly is unique in the marketplace, not just in the Twin Cities, but in the entire country.
Is it the facility, though, or is it the function being performed at the facility? I mean, it's equipment, and it's a function in a building.
I think it's both. I think it's both. I mean, truly having an indoor park is an amazing and very unique characteristic all in itself. But then, within that indoor park, you have something like Adventure Peak, and that just puts it at a whole other level. The National Recreation Parks Association had their national conference here two years ago, and I know of colleagues across the country that made a point to come to Edina to tour that facility. Even though it's over 25 years old, it's still considered, you know, years ahead of itself. There are people that are just clamoring over what a wonderful facility it was, and how they'd like to have something like that in their communities.
But is it unique because there's no other ventures that have managed to survive, because it's not financially feasible? I mean, that's my concern. It's a very unique facility, all the live plants and everything else, also generates a lot of expense, and we're at a point where we're hemorrhaging more than our trust fund will cover, more or less. So I recognize the uniqueness of it, and it was a great vision when it was started, but now, the operations of it, I don't know how sustainable they are. You know, so I understand people recognize it, if they want to, maybe they need to come and run it for us, and see if they can make money at it.
David had another comment or question.
As you go to final on this, I'd like to ask, can you give us, what I always challenge my students, is best, worst, and expected? I'd like to see the assumptions behind, in terms of number of bodies coming through and other things. The numbers are great, but really understanding what's going on behind, I trust they're fairly conservative numbers, and from what I can tease out, I think they probably are right here. What I'd like to see is what assumptions are going in underneath regarding traffic growth, essentially, usage growth, and kind of a best, worst, and expected for it, to give us kind of a range and an understanding, that in terms of towards assessing risk, this is how you assess risk. You begin to look at the assumption, to build some financial models of it, because there is no marketing budget here either, right now. I mean, one of the things about this facility right now is it sits there by, and is only filled by word of mouth. You know, one of the potentials here is, you know, what does a small marketing budget alone do? If you add in and expand, what a small marketing budget alone may do in terms of improving the revenues here. We're absolutely not marketing this facility whatsoever at this point, which, you know, means that, you know, there may be significant upside potential. But anyway, best, worst, and expected, kind of, and with a clear statement of the assumptions behind.
And we've got that. That's what I used as a basis for putting the summary together.
Yeah, if you could hand me the spreadsheet when you're all done with it, that'd be fun, too, but thank you.
All right. Ellen?
One of my first comments is, because I tend to usually look at things, and I speak for the trees, and I am thinking that what makes this park unique is the fact that there is organics, large organic presence when you walk in in the middle of the winter. I think that that's what is making people drive 20 miles. If you want to have a small, soft play area, I think you can do that anywhere. So I wanted to make that one point, because I do think that that's what makes it unique. But the other, some of the other questions that I have about this report, one is, I did want to see what might be out there as far as options, and I echo Councilmember Bennett's, wondering what else might be out there. And I'm wondering if you had surveyed any of the current tenants of Edinburgh to find out what they might want, as far as an expansion of services, or different services, and maybe what they might be willing to pay for.
We had just completed that, when we surveyed.
We did a survey that included 600 respondents from them, this was a year ago, for about a four-month period. And we did exactly that, asking people what they want, and that was part of the reason that we felt we had the support for the concession stand. We asked a lot of questions, why they come to the park, and as you just mentioned, one of the main reasons was the park environment. So we asked a lot of questions about what they would like to see. And I think a lot of the items that the consultants have provided were what the customers were looking for, in terms of particularly concessions and soft play, specifically for toddlers.
But I'm wondering about the tenants, the Edina Park Plaza, and the hotel, and the business owners.
We did not survey them.
And the other question I have is that we currently make $160,000, something like that, in rentals, and I'm wondering how, if this plan will affect that revenue source?
I'm not sure the rental number that you're referring to, if you're looking at our budget, that could potentially be birthday parties, or it could... our budget, that could potentially be birthday parties, or it could be potentially Centennial Lakes. But we don't have any other rentals in the building right now other than birthday parties. We did have a dollar amount that was added to our budget last year that was a significant number. I want to say it was between 40 and 50,000. That was a back payment of revenue that was coded to somebody else a few years ago. But right now, we have no other rentals of the building other than community ed, pool rentals, and those types of things.
And the, and the pool rentals is for the swim clubs?
For the swim club and community ed.
And about, do you know what that is?
I'm sorry, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
I think you used those pool rental numbers when you looked at if we took the pool out, what we'd lose.
On the expense side, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Member Brennan?
Listening to the discussion about the theater and the uniqueness of it and how even with the challenges, performers still enjoy performing there and how essential that is, and also the, your descriptions of how unique it is, and my experience having actually taught at the Southdale YMCA, it does seem to me that what's unique about Edinburgh is not the kid play space itself, because that has, there have been private entities that have had them, Discovery Zone, been in business, gone out of business. There are community centers around the Twin Cities area that offer that kind of play, facilities like the YMCA. I don't know about Lifetime and Flagship, but I would think that, that is something, they have some kid, children's play facilities. So what, what really seems to distinguish Edinburgh is the setting in which this function is located. And looking at your proposals, particularly in the order of priority and the stages, by the time you build it out, it doesn't sound like there'll really be much left of what makes Edinburgh unique and special today. I know that Member Brendel is really advocating for the theater remaining, but when I read the text in this report, I don't think you're recommending that the theater remain, because it looks like you're pointing out the conflict of uses. The fact that the expansion of Adventure Peak has really limited the use that can take place in the theater. Maybe if offices move to another part of the building, there will be green room space again. But it really does seem that by expanding the children's play use to fill the entire facility, you're making just about any other use impossible, as difficult as those uses might be today and as challenged. So I guess one, I go back to my original question, which is, I would really love to know, and I know it's not going to come out of this discussion today or this analysis, but I would love to know what it would cost us as a community just to operate the facility as a park without a fitness facility, without the pool that we lose money on, without the fitness facilities that we can't compete on, but just a unique kind of park. What, what did we, what did we gain and lose? How expensive was it for us? Did we make money on the rentals that we used to do before January 2008? Did we lose money on them? I don't know that we've ever teased that all apart. And just to look at what, again, what it would cost us as a community just to operate it as a park with walking paths, which are, at several points in your report, it's indicated that that is the single most prominent individual fitness activity, period, group or individual, that walking is the thing that people want to do.
Correct.
And again, the expansion of Adventure Peak has meant that there are fewer places in the building that people can walk. So again, not, not a problem with your report per se, but what we still don't have is this question of what's, what's driving us? And do we really know, do we know what all of our options are? I don't think we do today. And what would that basic option be? Member Sprague, you point out, yes, the building has costs. What are those basic, basic costs? If we don't try to operate anything else in it, but we have a catering kitchen, I know, we don't have a catering kitchen anymore. We've turned it into a bathroom for Adventure Peak. But is it, is it even reclaimable as that kind of public park? And if so, what would it cost us as a community to sustain it, to maintain it, sustain it, but not, you know, close up, again, the fitness facilities? I would sure like to know the answer to it, because otherwise, I think we're having this driver of how can we make Adventure Peak pay, but we're losing what has made it so special.
Member Swenson?
Isn't the answer to that really, do we make more money today on Adventure Peak than we made percentage-wise when we first opened it up and we didn't have Adventure Peak and we rented it out? So, Ann, since I was on council at the beginning of when we just rented it out, and we even had city functions there, and now we have Adventure Peak, it seems to me there was a point that I remember a number that said Adventure Peak can make more money for us than rental does, therefore, we're going to Adventure Peak. Is that correct?
That's exactly what happened, because I was on the council when the decision was made.
Thank you. Yeah.
Because we were losing money at the park.
We were losing money at rental. We really, we, we had changed the ice skating rink into a very small Adventure Peak at that point, maybe, I think is when we were trying to decide what to do. And that's, that's what I remember, is that...
And we decided to make a $250,000 investment in Adventure Peak, hoping it would work.
Right.
And, and it did work. We paid for it in eight months.
But we were losing, we were, we were not, rental was not working for us.
No.
I'll be honest.
We've never had the building without the fitness facilities, which probably never made money. We're, we have more clarity on the budget than we used to, but we've never, what is the building without the fitness facilities? And the ice skating rink probably was expensive to maintain. So this, this kind of stripped-down, just park available for rental, we've never had. But I do understand the discussion about the conversion to Adventure Peak, and I'm not questioning that decision at this point.
No, I know that.
And you're not suggesting that we abandon Adventure Peak?
No, and I see, I see value of that function in the community. But now, we're talking about converting all of Edinburgh Park. So then, again, you lose, the risk is, we lose Edinburgh Park in the interest of expanding Adventure Peak.
But for, for the average person, they've already lost Edinburgh Park. So it's, we're back to a very narrow niche of the community, which is a good function for the families to have this toddler play and so on. But we've gone to a narrower niche of users. It sounds like regardless of what it is, an indoor park with real plants, with that layout, with that heating structure, is expensive to operate anywhere. And that's really what we're bumping up against. Can we afford to keep that facility running?
Let's, let's be clear that, you know, the main function, the main design here is the pool area and the fitness facilities, which are woefully underutilized. They're simply, you know, so the change is, if we just talk about the Stage 1 plan here, not taking out the grotto and other things, but if we just talk about the Stage 1, which the primary change is the pool area and the fitness facilities. And those are the two areas that Ann can speak to better than I can, but they're, they're woefully underutilized. They're poorly designed. They don't have the facilities necessary to be useful. So we're actually not losing space that anybody is, that very many people are making any use of right now. Okay? So, I mean, it, to your suggestion, I mean, what it means would be just simply shutting that area off. Okay? We either have to redevelop that area, or you take the pool out, you shut it down, you drain it, you just close the area off and keep people, keep people out of it in turn, to run it as a bottom-line, open park type of facility. Because the main changes are going into, if you look at the plans, and I'm not advocating one or the other, but if you look at the plans, the main changes is to fill the pool in, take that area, that front space area out there on the other side of the Great Hall, which is underutilized, and utilize it.
Once upon a time, I wondered whether it was possible to close off the fitness, fill the pool, move Adventure Peak into that area, and then reclaim the ability to have the public uses that weren't related simply to, solely to Adventure Peak, with the Great Hall being a transition space between and with, I think you have the ability to close off the fitness area more than you do. So then you could possibly have theater, more theater events. You possibly could have more public events in the park, which is gorgeous. It's gorgeous. It's unique. And, but anyway, that's, I know, not, also not on the table.
I think the piece is missing.
Let me interrupt here. We got about three minutes to go. I think we should better, we better be talking about next steps here. So thoughts from either park board members or council members? Member Swenson?
Can I recommend a joint meeting between park board and council where we can just talk about what we've seen here and list off if we have other questions that we might need flushed in, you know, to come together to make a decision? I think this is a long-term decision. This isn't a tonight decision. This is a piece of information on an ongoing city piece of property. So that's what I would recommend.
I agree. There, there are certainly more areas that I have written down about that need to be talked about, but that, I mean, that could take the whole discussion. So I think that having a meeting where everything is on the table, whether this is an enterprise facility at all, whether it becomes a city park and something we manage out of the general fund with its own income and revenues that it can generate, how important is each aspect of that park to Edina being Edina, to Edinburgh being Edinburgh? And so that's, that's, that's a discussion I want to have.
For a question.
Mayor, we gotta, we have to have some information on, on new construction as well. I looked at, you know, we have the Grand View Report. We know there's a community center in there. And we've got to have some type of analysis or something to think about moving this function over, whether it's phased in over a short or a long period of time, avoiding some of these expensive capital improvements and putting that money into a new facility where the space could be built per square foot probably cheaper than retrofitting in older space. So I don't know how we get that, manager Neil or mayor, but I think that information somehow needs to be pulled into the analysis.
Sure. Bill?
Number Sprague just covered one of my questions. But before we have a joint session, I would like to see the questions posed tonight have answers, so that we could read. There's been some very good questions that I would like to see the answers to, primarily coming from this group on numbers and building on the marketing analysis. We have a list of the questions in a minute, so if we could get those answers before we have the session, I think it would help.
Schedule-wise, Scott, we're, on your, you're saying work sessions are probably a few months out anyway?
We are. And so scheduling, we are booked into a couple of, of early commitments through the end of February, actually. So having a joint session probably would not occur until March, because if we're going to keep commitments that we've already made. So that's, that's sort of the timeline. But, but to the questions that Mr. Low just raised, I think that that would give us time, actually, to work with, to work with the consultants and even bring in possibly some other resources to answer some of the questions and to be able to kind of frame those up for you in a, in a Q and A or FAQ kind of format and provide them to you prior to that work session.
Good. Number Swenson?
Obviously, we all have the ability to, if something should come up in the next weeks to months, that, where would you like us to forward any other thoughts or questions we might have, Scott?
I would say directly to Ann.
Okay.
To Ann Catrery.
Thank you.
Other comments from anyone participating this evening? Otherwise, we'll try to set something up for sometime in March for a work session and get back at this topic, which is quite fascinating. So thank you for all your good work on our behalf. We appreciate it. And we'll be seeing you again, I'm sure. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. All right. If there's nothing further, we will stand adjourned.